I know, I did get the nine thousand. I thought it should've been nine thousand dollars on this activity. Yeah, that is out of our lunch fund, so that went into child nutrition. Take care of that one deposit, but...
Do you recognize we're down on anything? Everything's about right?
No, but what was the... I was trying to think of what we were down on last... Was it in the sinking funds? We were down?
The sinking probably got a lot.
Um, and it's probably gonna be down still because we only have, what? Six hundred dollars more that we collected on it. So I would say it would still be down. So it was like twenty... Was it twenty-three?
It was twenty-three.
Yeah. Seems like that was it was down. So it's gonna be probably about that. Everything else should be... Everything else should be up. Oh, I know. It was twenty-seven. What's that? Yeah. So yeah, that wouldn't be out of the red on that bill, but...
So nothing out of the ordinary?
Nothing, um, yeah. Out of ordinary. Would've been on there. And really, that's the same with the activity fund. You put the nine thousand out of the lunch accounts, but...
Okay. So do we want to vote to approve this after we actually...
With the way down?
Table to approve after we do where we can begin? No, we'll table it till we can look at the actual report and then make the vote on it. Item number eight, discussion and vote to approve the activity fund.
Yeah, that was up too. And that was the same thing. Yeah, there wasn't anything...
Okay, we'll table it to sort of vote when the report becomes available.
There wasn't anything big as far as purposes we did?
No, in the front of that, that bank statement sheet is, um... The, I mean, down here, once it's down to the interest, I mean, that's everything that happened.
Okay.
The amounts and everything, and then the two hundred and four thousand is our balance and that right now. So yeah, I don't think there is any... Command that I need to check, but...
Okay. We'll just table it for him to make the vote for the reports tonight. Item number nine, discussion and vote to approve some encumbrances.
I just hand typed all those, all the new encumbrances that you can take a look at. All the normal blanket purchase order, ones that have already been approved, they'll be ready together. But those are all the, just the new ones.
The heat book from the library?
Mm-hmm, yeah. That was what they quoted us on a month ago.
Board members in the finance workshop.
Mm-hmm.
Young supply on the world pencil sharpeners. Payroll workshop.
Fifteen minutes.
Harvey Lobby Arts and F C C L A supplies. Staples and Jeremy Hickman field members. I'll pass this round to you.
They should have one.
No, I didn't look at it.
I'm sorry.
Don't forget about it, it's gonna be important. I have a motion by Amber and a second by T J to approve the encumbrances. Judy, would you call the vote, please?
Gertie?
Yes.
Kim Minow?
Yes.
Allison?
Yes.
Keller?
Yes.
Will Hyte?
Yes.
Item ten, discussion and vote to approve fundraisers submitted.
There's nothing about the fundraisers in your pocket because the two ladies that have fundraisers are just right here.
Okay.
Cherokee High School varsity cheerleaders. Okay, there we go. High school fundraisers, the cheer... Elementary cheer camp in August. Volleyball tournament in September. Selling candy bars after school. April to May, and then Fourth of July t-shirts. Who's the volleyball tournament against?
We will just have the kids create teams, teachers create teams. It'll be community deal. We had our first one this year.
I thought maybe it'd be like the staff against the kids and they'd be like, knock down.
It could end up that way. I mean, the elementary teachers had a team and, I mean, they ended up playing a bunch of the kids.
Did they?
So...
Yeah.
We just thought it'd be a better turnout if we waited till the school paint, you know, started back up and...
And it quit snowing.
Yes.
So I have a motion by Amber and a second by T J. Judy, would you call the vote, please?
Keller?
Yes.
Will Hyte?
Yes.
Gertie?
Yes.
Kim Minow?
Yes.
Allison?
Yes.
Item number eleven, administrative reports.
Hi. No, forget about me. It's all right. Well, as you know, we're going to have a spring concert in May twelfth. And back in the burn, I want to bring this here. We did music royalty. And the way we did music royalty, we would have each class build on two couples. And then they would compete against each other. What they would do is they would set out cans like this throughout the community, such as Cherokee Music Royalty 2014, a penny per vote, their name, their picture. And then whoever had the most money would win the crown, or win the king, or the princess, or the prince. I want to bring that here. However, I want to do it a little differently because I only have two classes and an after-school band. What I would do is I would have the junior high pick two couples. So they would have two guys and two girls competing against each other. And then in the high school, I would bring in the after-school band. I've got three guys that could do this. And in the choir, I would have two girls and a guy. So the girl could team up with the guy, escort them per se. Are there any questions? Did I make any sense whatsoever? So they don't have to be seniors? I mean, no.
And all we're doing is putting that out to rate donations.
And that's how people can move on. That's how we know if it's gonna win.
Yeah.
So how many... There would be, how many winners?
There would be a queen, a king, a prince, and a princess.
And that money goes to?
Music, general fund for music. We really need it. But this would also show the kids that the community actually cares. Most of my high school kids don't believe that the community cares. That's quite that, so...
This is the... This is the kind of seat that we get through...
May twelfth is?
Mm-hmm. They would put their cans out in April, but we would go on royalty this week. So I can talk to them and say, okay, this is what we do, this is what you need, this is what you need to do. Since it is kind of new.
I have a motion by T J and a second by Amber. Judy, would you call the vote, please?
Gertie?
Yes.
Kim Minow?
Yes.
Allison?
Yes.
Keller?
Yes.
Will Hyte?
Yes.
For the music activity fund?
Yeah. Any more fundraisers that I... Before I go too far. I am bald.
You're fine.
Since Mr. Littlefield is here, let's move back up to item number five. Administration of the oath of office to Corey Littlefield and recognize Mr. Littlefield as our newest board member. Seat four. The term of five years on the Cherokee Board of Education.
Barely made. I'm not real pictures, right?
I'm gonna have you raise your right hand and I'll read this and you can just repeat. I, Corey Littlefield.
I, Corey Littlefield.
Hereby declare under oath that I will faithfully perform...
Hereby declare under oath that I will faithfully perform...
The duties of the board member of Cherokee Public Schools.
The duties of the board members of Cherokee Public Schools.
District I zero forty-six.
District I four...
Zero forty.
Zero forty-six.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
All of the duties pertaining to said office.
All the duties pertaining to said office.
And obey the Constitution.
And obey the Constitution.
And the laws.
And the laws of the United States and Oklahoma. United States and Oklahoma.
Leslie?
Thank you, sir.
At this time, Kenny is relieved.
Mr. Gertie?
What's that?
At this time, Mr. Gertie is relieved, and you come to the board table.
You're our president.
We better hang on.
Just have seats till we reorganize.
Thank you. How we doing, guys?
Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Sorry if I need... You may want to wash your hands. Thank you, sir. Sorry, it was the only time Ronnie could fit me in to do our things.
As by president, I'm here to take the lead.
For number six, discussion and vote to be organized, the Cherokee Board of Education. We need to vote for president, vice president, and clerk. Do I hear any nominations?
Make the motion to nominate Amber as president of the school board. I say that.
I also.
Boy, that was a fast trade.
Yeah, that's nervous of me, guys.
You don't even need to.
Any other nominations? I have asked three times, any other nominations? Judy?
Do you accept?
Yes. Judy, if you can. Keller?
Yes.
Will Hyte?
Yes.
Littlefield?
Yes.
Kim Minow?
Yes.
Allison?
Yes.
Okay, next for vice president. Any nominations?
I make a motion to nominate T J, Allison as vice president.
I second that.
There.
Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Littlefield?
Yes.
Kim Minow?
Yes.
Allison?
Yes.
Keller?
Yes.
Will Hyte?
Yes.
Okay, now for the position of clerk. Do I have any nominations?
Let's do a little heads up here. You have to sign a lot of papers. But let you know right off the bat.
Wherever you need me to get going. So I gotta nominate myself, or what?
I'm waiting for somebody.
I will nominate Corey Littlefield as clerk.
I'll say that.
Any other nominations?
Yeah, you're welcome.
Any other nominations? Judy? Littlefield?
Yes.
Kim Minow?
Yes.
Allison?
Yes.
Keller?
Yeah.
Will Hyte?
He's still gonna sign them all one more time than you.
Stay late and sign checks.
Hopefully, we'll be going to automatic pause. We're too long, it'll take a lot of that pressure off of you.
We had to wait till Tony was...
What about a stamp?
Okay, now we'll move to number twelve.
Eleven.
Eleven, sorry. Administrative reports.
For if you got anybody to say?
Fifth and eighth grader taking the writing test tomorrow. Parent teacher conferences this Friday and next week in the evening.
It's a crazy month. If you go through the office and look at the calendar, you're gonna see that we're out of school Friday for parent teacher conferences. Turn around, got one more week, then we're out for spring break. Come back two weeks, then we're on testing. So it's fast and furious. So there's not a night, anyway, after next week that's not gonna be busy with something at school. And I invite you to all the school activities, and I know a lot of times you can't make them all, but there's a slew of them. And just know what's going on. The website usually is good about putting that information out. Of course, tomorrow is a big day. And it's the bond issue, and, you know, the important thing is the vote. And I won't say much more about that. I think over the last two months, through all the meetings I've gone through, I've tried to explain the pros about it and being realistic about the cons. And knowing that, you know, there are some scenarios out there that we need to be concerned about. And, you know, the whole intensive purpose of the bond issue was we have spent a lot of money over the last three years repairing things. And, you know, Mr. Gertie and Ms. Will Hyte and T J have been a part of that process with heating and air units. It seems like that was something all the time. At the first year I was here, it seemed like it was plumbing issues. And, you know, it just never stops. And needless to say, I can't go a week without somebody coming to me and saying something needs to be repaired. And every time we do that, we have the money for it. But when we do that, it takes money out of general instruction. And so far today, we've spent well over three hundred thousand dollars in getting the facilities like they are today. There still needs to be repairs. Don't get me wrong. I mean, we still can find seats that are unbroken. You can go and see the ceiling tiles where water leaks and all this other stuff. But, you know, the bottom line is, we can patch these all day long. And when we do those kind of things, we're not being able to keep up with technology. I don't have to be picky about how we do technology things. I don't have to be picky about how we do different things. You know, when I came on board, which seems to be still a big issue, the textbooks. And we do, right now, we have had a history of doing purchasing textbooks in homage, page, or patterns, whatever the teachers wanted. So first grade had something different than second grade. Third grade had something different than second grade. And something different from fourth grade. There was no, basically, vertical alignment. And when I came on board and talked about, you know, goals and where the school should be, you know, textbooks was an issue. But in the bottom sense of the word, I knew how much an overall over-encutpensing scale of textbooks would cost school districts. And I'm telling you conservatively, we're looking at two to three hundred thousand dollars if we're gonna do a top-down, bottom-up. So we need to think about that. When the appropriate textbook adoption years come. Meaning in two years, we're gonna be dealing with English Language Arts, the next year math. Those are gonna be two years back-to-back. You can expect those kind of expenditures. Now, we're gonna put the money into the things that we're trying to fix daily. And all the things identified are things, areas that we've had to address. That's taken, basically, Rob and Peter to save Paul. And it's taken money out of the general fund to support the athletic fund, or general fund to support the building fund, and all sorts of things. So, you know, this was the plan. And looking at the plan, the assessed valuation at this point is continuing to grow. You know, without telling people for certain that it's not gonna be a fifteen percent impact on their taxes. I can almost guarantee that as the assessed valuation goes up, the millage rate will go down. There's a connection there. And if you all remember, and I'll give you these later if you want to look. But you can look at our history of the last two bond issues. The first page is assessed valuation the last twenty-five years. And it shows how we've gone up fourteen point five seven percent in the last five years, and thirty-two percent in the last two years. But you can take these two bond issues, and I marked where this July would be. And you can tell where the original millage rate was to where we are now has gone down based on this overall picture right here. And folks, that's gonna continue as the valuation goes up. So the fifteen percent, that's me being way over-conservative. And I said, and the bottom line is this, to get a project that big and to take that kind of money? I looked at several different scenarios. I can look at between the range of ten percent to thirty percent. I think thirty percent and getting six or seven million dollars would've been hard to ask for the taxpayers. Also could've looked at repayment of five years to twenty years. I think twenty years is pretty asinine, believe it or not, financially. So we had to do something that was doable. And this was the most doable I could see to do the projects that we could do to keep the tax rate over the next fifteen to eighteen years that we do not raise the taxes from here on out. That we can still do these projects every four to six years or whatever, and do all the things that we had encompassed in these plans. So, you know, I'm excited about it. And if it passes, great, we're ready to roll. You know, more than likely, I'm gonna get a call from the people that matter, from the powers that be, and say, this is where we go next. And there's gonna be a lot of special board meetings. Pass different things to get contractors in, building superintendent maybe, all different things. And there'll be a lot of decisions have to be made. This isn't Mr. Ellis' deal anymore. This is a deal that you all are gonna be sitting in here making decisions on how big you want the stands, what needs to be done as far as paint goes and elementary. All these different things are gonna be laid on your table. And so the stretch is just beginning. At my point, it's done. But for you all, it's just beginning. And on the other end, if it doesn't, doesn't pass, ultimately believe that this is the way that Cherokee Public Schools should go in the next year or two. And we need to come back and refocus on what, why, or why not it didn't pass, and put a bond out there that it's gonna be strong enough to pass again. Because, folks, this is where we're at. Thirty-three years since we've done anything. What's gonna happen if this facility ever burnt down? We're not gonna replace it, ultimately, is the bottom line, and have the scope of what we got now. So we need to figure out a way to tackle the problem and move on. Bottom line, win or lose, it's about tackling the problem. And ultimately, and believe it or not, it's the last thing I'm gonna say, is Cherokee and the school is a reflection of each other. When you go to ball games and you listen to the radio, they say the cheese from Cherokee. I picked that up listening to KXLS coming back from the Cherokee Strip Tournament. They recognize this town because of who we are as a school. And by gosh, we have something to be proud of. Matter of fact, old Northwestern, a part of Oklahoma, has something to be proud of. But as far as we're concerned, we gotta start thinking of a plan. And that's what we did by putting together a capital improvement plan, focusing on all sorts of things. All sorts of things. I mean, we aren't done when the bond issue passes or fails. If it passes again in about a year, we're gonna have to start planning what the next projects are and how we're gonna do that.
How soon will we know something tomorrow?
What do you mean, how soon will we know?
Well, you know, how long does it take for the elections to become...
It'll be done at seven o'clock tomorrow night.
So we'll know tomorrow night.
And you can do one of two things. You can either come up here to see what this precinct is and see what the vote is there, or you can wait in the courthouse where the total is, or you can get online and look at the state lecture board website. They'll all have them posted.
It's gonna pass sixty percent.
Sixty percent. It's what's called a supermajority. And, you know, it takes everybody. I've gotten a lot of feedback, both positive and I've gotten some negative. And I think some of the negative really doesn't know the information, or using the information that they do know to fit why they're voting now. And folks, look, the monkey on the back is, yes, it raises taxes. That's the monkey. But it's the only way that we can improve things. And again, what I said was, I tried to do it the most conservative way possible, knowing that that's what ultimately turns some people off. There is nothing about this bond issue that people can really argue about. I mean, we've done town surveys, we've talked to people, we've done all sorts of stuff. And track or not, there's a lot of people that are still upset about it. I don't feel like I can do the next major project. Look, I got my own little project I'd like to see. I'm not gonna lie about that. You know what my project is I'd like to see? Is a second gym. I'm not gonna lie. But that's not even up there on the priorities. You know, what I'd like to see too is, you know, some of this older part of the high school refurbished and remodeled. So it doesn't look sedated. You know, I'd like to have child nutrition stuff. I'd like to actually have a vehicle that's got warmers in it so it stays warm from point A to point B. I'd also like to have a real kitchen. I'd also like to have tables that weren't here ever since I was in first grade. So, you know, there's a lot of things that people get fired up about, or they wanna see, you know, our gym's not ADA compliant. And I'm telling you, if we repurpose a gym to be ADA compliant, you're looking at at least one point four million dollars. So all these things, we can't get at once. We have to decide what's priority and what's the next phase. And I'm telling you, pass or fail, we're gonna have to start talking about where we go next and what's important. And where, you know, how we're gonna mark that, how to get information out. Because I'm telling you, I really do feel like there's been a lot of information out there the past three months, and there are still some people that don't know anything. And, you know, we've used social media, we've used the newspapers. I had a town meeting that only forty people showed up to. You know, and the deal about it is, is when you put stuff out there, you got two kinds of people. You got A, the ones that already have made up their mind what they're gonna do, yea or nay. And then you got B, those that are gonna sit there and wait and see what their friends or whoever has influenced them the most and what makes the sense. And, you know, some of that stuff, and I've gone around to all these civic groups and whatnot. And like I said, what's surprising is the lack of information that's really out there when it's so accessible now. So anyway, I have these for you if you wanna take a look at those on your own. But it shows what I'm talking about, the relationship of those things. And knowing that, you know, four of these bond issues roll over in four years. So, and that's also gonna take an effect in a positive way. And if we can get another seventeen percent growth in four years, we're gonna be sitting really, really fine. This type of year, time of year is really busy. I kind of preface that in the last two board meetings. The last board meeting, I think, in your agenda book is like this. There should be a handbook deal. Folks, we're gonna start hitting that hard. We're gonna have to talk about some issues as far as, like, smoking goes. And not that smoking is a problem at school, but, you know, there are things out there that kids are smart enough to find loopholes in. And one of the loopholes that might be coming up before too long is eat cigarettes or the vapor and things like that. So we're gonna have to address those type of things. We're gonna have to do a dress code probably before school because it seems like after, after we start school, it's too late because the fashion has already been set for the summer, and they come back with muscle shirts or whatever. And then we have to interpret it where it's gender-friendly. I mean, when you look at some of the policies in there, like paint tops, it was designed for guys, ultimately. But then you got girls that like to wear them. Now, because it's fashionable, is it appropriate? Probably not. So where do we draw the line? And that's things that you're gonna have to consider as we move on. And hopefully, we can get these things done by the end of school so people, you know, get that information out. So people know how to shop and dress, and we don't deal with the first month arguing over interpretations because that's ultimately what it gets to be. That's what I have.
Number twelve, discussion and vote to approve the contract audit of the thirteen fourteen...
Number 12, discussion of vote to approve the contract audited of the 1314 fiscal year to be conducted during the 2014-2015 school year. Ms. Charles W. Carroll.
I have that somewhere.
What are we auditing?
Well, we're required by law to be audited each year. And we use Chad W. Carroll to come and do that. And they come and take up about three days going through all our accounts. And then they will present that to you. It will come to you. And then we will present that to the state.
Do we get to make changes before we present it to the state?
Well, what they, all they're required to do is audit. Now, he will make, what's it called, when he gives us our little?
Give us our findings?
Yeah, findings of fact.
We've got a, not a letter, but how we're gonna correct the things that we found that were wrong.
And typically, what they get us for, nick us for, is like segregation duties, meaning that Judy can't do all the same job.
Correct.
That type of deal. We haven't had any big findings. We've had several audits, one way or another, but not anything, you know, through that. Three years ago, we had a child nutrition audit that kind of caused us not to be able to get our child nutrition claims corrected. That took a while. And then, right now, we're doing what, well, I've told you, January, Title I audit, which kind of looks at our federal funds, and that's still going on. So it's just, it's really housekeeping, Corey.
I make a motion to approve the contract. Chad W. Carroll. Twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen school year. Any questions?
I have a motion, but I'm second.
I'm second.
Judy? Littlefield?
Yes.
Kimmanoff?
Yes.
Allison?
Yes.
Heller?
Yes.
Willhite?
Yes.
Okay, number 13, discussion of vote to approve the annual dropout report for grades seven to twelve.
Okay, this is something that we do each year for state. And it's part of the accreditation process that we're getting ready to do. And right now, we've only had one senior considered a dropout in the three quarters that we've been in. So, and that's even including, we even include eighth grade, too. So basically, what we need to do is just approve dropout report. As a state.
Any other discussion? I have a motion.
I make a motion to approve dropout for grades seven to twelve.
Tell me, make a motion, but have a second. Okay, Judy, please. Littlefield?
Yes.
Kimmanoff?
Yes.
Allison?
Yes.
Heller?
Yes.
Willhite?
Yes.
Fourteen, discussion of vote to approve the annual student college remediation report.
Somehow, we're responsible for freshmen as they leave high school. Just to know, I guess, where our shortfalls are when they go in as a freshman. And basically, what they do is, the best we can do is we hit the website for the higher regions and see where we stack up against. And right now, for this year's freshmen, we have one in English remediation and three students in math remediation. And there are three students who are duplicates. I mean, unduplicated, meaning that there's only one that is the math and the English. So that helps us know what we're teaching and what we're not teaching and be able to track the kids as they heal along.
I make a motion to approve the annual student college remediation report.
Have a motion, but I'm second. Judy? Littlefield?
Yes.
Kimmanoff?
Yes.
Allison?
Yes.
Heller?
Yes.
Willhite?
Yes.
I do second, I didn't hear. Tony?
Thank you.
Number fifteen, discussion of vote to approve hiring Allison McTheaters as elementary paraprofessional at the rate of $9.66 per hour.
I can get this all, matter of fact, probably what I'll do, since we got so many new people, I'll start, I'll put a packet together of general information types of. But we do have a support employee salary schedule. And what we try to do is look at experience and where they might fall in a like-type job or a job that's similar. And just so you know, a paraprofessional does have to have a little more education than the rest of the support employee positions that we have. They're required to have a total of, what, 40 hours, 60 hours? It's equivalent of like a associate's degree. They could go to a four-year college and not have an associate's degree with that many hours, or they have to have a associate's degree, or they have to go have the training at Career Tech and take a test for it to be a certified paraprofessional. And all our, matter of fact, all our paraprofessionals but one have associate degrees or higher. So we feel pretty comfortable in that. Of course, Allison just graduated in December, just got finished. And she is kind of the answer that we have for replacing Mr. Winter during mid-year. She's gonna go into fifth grade full-time, well, full-time, I say that, for four hours of the day. And then she does help with assistant coaching as well with all the girl sports, too.
Any further discussion?
So Allison will become a full-time teacher eventually?
Well, no, she's just a full-time paraprofessional right now. She could go back and do an alternative certification or go back and get her master's in education.
I make a motion to approve the hiring of Allison McTheaters.
I second. TJ, motion, Missy, second, what, Judy? Heller?
Yes.
Allison?
Yes.
Kimmanoff?
Yes.
Littlefield?
Yes.
Willhite?
Yes.
Number sixteen, discussion of vote to approve the OAM's, Other Academic Measures for Teacher Evaluations.
Okay. I'm gonna try to make this as easy as possible, painless as possible because we have dealt with this, or sometimes we don't even know. The teacher evaluation process has come up under a lot of changes over the last two or three years. And we've kind of discussed those as each year has come along. And there's actually two or three parts to the evaluation process. And they've gotten some things tweaked out and some things not tweaked out yet. And there's some things that are pilots and some things that aren't pilots to make the teacher evaluation process kind of rigorous on the administrator that's doing the observations and whatnot. I mean, I'm telling you, it's tedious, it's labor-intensive, and it seems like that's all you're doing, really, is evaluations. But part of it is the teacher and the administrator have to sit down. And the teacher has the right to sit there and go, these are the things that, these are the other things I wanna be measured on, just not you coming into my classroom. And some of those things are like state assessments with ELIs or end-of-destruction tests, Oklahoma Core Curriculum Test. I'm not even gonna say this because they're not available anymore. But the park assessments, and they're not, they're outdoor because the bar seats said we're not a member of the park or whatever. There's things that they can list, exams placement type things, DIBL's literacy first, computer-generated assessments, Explorer Plan Act, industry certification exams, and those are more like in your vocational areas that are industrial certified. We're not really in that area. Some high schools are, Career Tech would be. Star reading, star math, a test of English as a foreign language, and some other assessments. So they sit down and decide, you know, what administrator can look at to see how their effectiveness is beyond the classroom. And that's basically what you're approving tonight.
Any further discussion or questions? Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the I'll second. Vote to approve the
OAM, yeah, OAM.
For teacher evaluation.
Judy? Littlefield?
Yes.
Littlefield?
Yes.
Kimmanoff?
Yes.
Allison?
Yes.
Heller?
Yes.
Number seven, proposed executive session to discuss teacher evaluation for section 25 of Oklahoma Statute 307b1.
Make a motion to be in the executive session.
I second.